Okay, welcome everybody to the September 28th School Board Directors Meeting. I call this meeting to order. Start with roll call.
Ms. Denon. Mr. Foose.
Here.
Mrs. Hogan.
Present.
Mrs. McWhorter.
Here.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mr. Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Mr. Hemingway.
Somebody has their sound on in their on their on their device on the telephone, so just turn that down a little bit.
Okay, could we all stand for a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, just to, just to let us know that joining-
Joining us this evening, we have Mr. Bill Trukowski, our telecommunications teacher at BASH. And with him is Evan Lichfuss. Evan is a sophomore at the high school and is listed on the agenda under personnel this evening for approval as our audio video student worker. Under the guidance of Mr. Trukowski, Evan will be will be providing video services for the school board meeting. So, welcome Evan. We're thrilled to have you here. Yeah, I think we're good.
I would like to announce that we did have an executive meeting prior to this meeting. It was approximately 15 minutes and it was informational. I have a statement I'd like to read. It just said, basically, you've heard it before. Good evening and thank you for joining us. Before we begin this evening's meeting, we ask that everyone be respectful to our board and administration by not calling out or disrupting the flow of our agenda. If our audience does-
Sorry.
-does not comply with these rules, we will recess and hold the meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 PM virtually. Public comment will be allowed during the virtual session. The same three minutes per person, 30 minutes per comment period will be followed. So again, everyone, thank you for being here and it's, uh, we have a lot to get through tonight. So let's, let's get to this meeting. Let's get it started. That's going to bring us right to our public comment period number one. I do believe that we have one person signed up for public comment.
We do. Uh, I believe it is Barb Furman.
Okay, Ms. Furman, while you're in the process getting, I don't want to read the statement. That way it gives you a chance to to head on up there. I just want to say, on behalf of the school, on behalf of the Board of School Directors, I would like to welcome you to this meeting. We welcome your attendance and input from stakeholders to assist us with making recommendations and decisions related to the Board of Superior School District. The procedures and rules for public participation are detailed in BASD Board Policy 006. This document is available at this meeting and on the BASD website. Participants properly registered on the sign up sheet will be recognized by myself. Public comment period number one is limited to topics on tonight's agenda. Participants must preface their comments by the announcement of their name, address, and group affiliation if that is appropriate. All statements, inquiries, and comments shall be directed to my to myself. No participant may address or question board members individually, administrative team members individually, school employees, or members of the public individually. Note that we value and will not compromise the privacy of our students and staff. Please see us outside the realm of the public meeting if you have a concern about an individual staff member or student. If your public comment includes a question, Ms. Torsha or a member of her staff will be in contact with you to confirm your question and provide you with with the information. Comments are limited to three minutes and comment periods are limited to 30 minutes. Individuals may indicate a desire to speak a second time if the time limit is left in the 30 minute period. Finally, note that we do record our board and committee meetings and we do post them on YouTube with a link on our website. We request that if you wish to take pictures or record the meeting yourself, you do so in a non-disruptive and discreet manner and use the materials respectfully and responsibly. Again, thank you very much, Ms. Furman. When you're ready.
My name is Barb Furman, Gilbertsville retired Boyertown teacher. I have always been a strong advocate for public education in our Boyertown community. My area of expertise and passion is wellness, empowering students to lead healthy lifestyle with nutrition, exercise, positive lifestyle choices. That is why between May 2020 and September 2021, it has been heartbreaking and perplexing. Three weeks into the pandemic, I expressed concern to my family over how easily we give up our civil liberties. We now look at the PACE survey that deals with health and safety habits, social, emotional, physical, and general health habits as questioned by those that are forcing all children to wear masks. These masks have packaging that reads, "Does not protect against disease spread." We can't seem to have a reasoned debate or discussion about pros and cons of mask wearing, instead attempting to convince children to question their own immune system. But kids are supposed to honestly fill out a PACE survey to reduce crisis behaviors. Who is who has now created the crisis? As an education professional with a master's, my number one priority is what is best for children. Our healthy children filling out the PACE survey mask doesn't touch the damage that has been done by state mandates and how they have been carried out locally. No amount of taxes or state COVID money will help until parents gain the freedom to decide what is best for their child. The time and resources would be better spent on evaluating the data and research at the county and state level, being used to enforce the mask mandates and our community's reasoned approach. Let me remind you that over this pandemic, health clubs were closed while state stores were deemed essential. Schools in person were closed while marijuana shops were open.
Can you please address what is on the agenda for the public?
It's the PACE survey. And the PACE survey deals with-
Okay, well, you're you're riding a line. I'll just say respectfully, just, you know, try to keep it to what's on the agenda on the public-
While marijuana and and alcohol are on the PACE survey. Churches were closed as social media thrived and introduced fact checker censorship over free speech and thinking rights. In closing, my philosophy on life, own your job, own your life. We are not victims but victors through faith, mind, and Jesus Christ. My choice is freedom, one nation under God, indivisible. I truly believe that. I do not dislike anyone, even with those whom I disagree with liberty and justice for all. I could have cited stats and Monco data. I have watched them. I have taken it seriously, but this is common sense.
Okay, Barb, thank you. Okay, we have looking for approval of minutes. If it's okay with the board, I'd like to, unless we want to separate these, I want to ask for a motion to approve the August 24th and also the September 14th minutes.
McWhorter moves.
I'll second.
Okay, any questions or comments on either of the two minutes? Anybody on the phone have any questions or comments?
Anyone on the phone have any questions or comments about the minutes?
Okay, if we could go to a vote, then that would be great.
Ms. Dieroff. Mr. Foose.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Mrs. McWhorter.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman. Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next we have some students showcase we'd like to recognize. Ms. Torsha.
Thank you. Tonight, we celebrate the first of our class of 2022 Senior Spotlights. First, congratulations to Oliver Heath. Oliver was nominated by Chief Peterson, formerly a NJROTC teacher and now part of the Special Education Department. As a teacher and mentor for the last four years, I have watched as Oliver has grown into a high quality young man. He has worked his way up the ranking in NJROTC and is currently the unit commanding officer. Oliver has shared his leadership talents with the youngest cadets and has been a positive influence for all students at BASH. Thank you, Oliver, for setting a positive example for all students. Next, we are proud to feature Abigail Cadwalder. Abby was recommended by her American literature teacher and link crew advisor, Mrs. DeBlasi, who states that Abby epitomizes the best attributes of a person. Her academic success is extremely admirable, but her genuine character needs to be in the spotlight. Abby is inherently humble, honest, and compassionate. I have witnessed her interactions with students and adults, and I am consistently and constantly impressed with her integrity and sincerity. Her words and actions speak volumes about the way we should treat one another, and that needs to be celebrated. Last but not least, we celebrate Caitlin Riddle. Mr. Jones, Health and Physical Education teacher, nominated Caitlin Riddle for her excellent work in the student-run club of the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. As the president of the club, she helps to organize the leadership team, weekly meetings, and meetings with administration. Caitlin does this at the personal sacrifice of getting up and coming in early. As she is an AM Berks Career Technology Center student, she has displayed tremendous personal growth over her years at BASH, and I am excited to see what her future holds. Congratulations to all three of you. We hope you have an amazing senior year.
Thanking Ms. Torsha. Next, we have our student representative report. Mr. Foose.
Yes, so returning, we have Senior Sarah Drakis. And joining us this evening for her first official sit-in is Junior Olivia Brodowski. And I just want to say, I'm really look forward to everything that they'll be sharing with us throughout the year. I was a pain in their side getting our first meeting scheduled, and I ended up missing that. And they were able to put together a very good and informative report, showed great leadership, and and I'd look forward to everything they will do this year.
All right, good evening, everyone. It is wonderful, wonderful to be with you all again, and I look forward to a great year. I would like to take a second and welcome Olivia Brodowski to the junior board representative position. In the last few months, I've had the pleasure of working with her and learning more about who she is. I would love to give Olivia a second to introduce herself to everyone.
Hello, everyone. I'm Olivia. I came to Boyertown from Pottstown in the middle of fifth grade. Through my years at Boyertown, I have found good friends here that have helped me become the person I am today. I'm a rather self-directed person. When I become passionate about something, I'm known to take control and see it through. Although I'm not, although I would not consider myself athletic, I do have a passion towards sports. I was involved in Boyertown's Optimist Girls Basketball, Club Volleyball, and I enjoy watching ice hockey games with my friends. I'm a good listener and I'm willing to look at things from different perspectives. I enjoy doing research and fact-finding to both support or refute ideas. I look forward to representing my constituents here on the school board.
Perfect. I would like to take a second and share how this transition has been back to school. As a senior, my friends and I cannot be happier to be around one another, no matter the circumstances. For many of us, this is a year in which we are taking classes and opportunities that apply directly to our future plans, so being in person has only heightened our excitement during this time.
For me, after a very chaotic year, returning to in-person brought its own anxieties. As we adjust back to the classroom environment, it remains a constant concern, how long will this last? While we are encouraged to focus on the future, the uncertainty of each day weighs heavy. I try to encourage and keep a positive attitude, especially when talking to my constituents. I, along with the student body, greatly appreciate how this community has come together to make in-person learning possible.
In addition, it has been confirmed by the student council, there will not be a homecoming dance, but king and queen crowding will still occur. And BASH's athletics fall sports are going strong. It has been reported that the student sections have been bolder and bigger than years past, adding to the excitement as these games take place. From personal experience, cheering on these wonderful dedicated athletes has been a joy, and I look forward to all the opportunities to come.
Also, Sarah and I are hoping to host our first Student Leader Luncheon next month with Dr. Foley. Our focus is on COVID-19 safety in schools and overall transition back to in-person learning. We look forward to sharing information directly from the student body once that luncheon occurs.
And we just want to thank you so much for your time and attention. We look forward to sharing more as these months come, and we look forward to the school year and everything that we can accomplish together. So have a great night, everyone.
That's great. Thank you both. Next, we have discussion and information from Mr. David Smaldins-
Smaldins.
Smaldins and Dr. Horton. They're going to talk to us about suicide prevention and also a little bit about the the PACE survey. So welcome and thank you for being here.
Good evening and thank you, everyone, for having us. My name's Dave Smaldins. I'm the assistant principal at Middle School West. And here with me, I have Dr. Kristen Horton, who is our supervisor of student services. We did want to come and talk to you tonight about what we do in our district for suicide prevention, certainly a very serious topic. It's timely because September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and we wanted to just kind of go through some of the different pieces that we have here in our school district regarding prevention. One key piece that we have is our Safe to Say Something program. This is a program that started, I believe, about three years ago by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. It's through the Attorney General's Office. It's actually a tip line that has been set up for all schools in the Commonwealth for people to submit tips of concern, which often deal with suicide, kids that are depressed, or it could also be dealing with drugs, alcohol, different types of things that are out there. One of the key pieces that we have are some training components at the beginning of each school year for our secondary students in the middle school and high school, who this was specifically designed for, that we entered, educate them at the very beginning of the school year as to what this looks like and how they can submit a tip to this program. We'll talk a little bit about what that looks like as we go through. Our school district has a team. Every school district has a team that they establish. As you can see, the members on there are made up of central office and high school and middle school administrators. What we do is, we are all on call basically 24/7. And we can get calls, to be honest, we've had one on Thanksgiving Day a couple of years ago. We get them sometimes in the middle of the night. The system is set up that if there are emergency situations, they will call us in the middle of the night. They kind of determined whether or not it needs to come to us immediately to gather information. So, for example, you know, I could be at home tonight at at 11 o'clock, and we could get a tip that comes through, and we all get basically a, an email and also a text alert that'll come through. And then we log into the system to see what the tip is. And if it is a severe tip where it could be, somebody basically is in life danger or, you know, something questionable, they will call us directly, and we will provide that 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 tip line with contact information. If it's in the evening, not during school hours, they will actually send a police officer to do a welfare check on that student. And and I will tell you, we've had quite a few of those over the last year. The numbers definitely went up during the pandemic, and we have had many calls. After the call is taken care of, we do follow up at the school. That's an important component, is that we don't just drop it there. We actually follow up, and our counselors and our and our team will work with the parents and to see if there's any supports we need to put in place for that student at school, whether it's referral to our student assistance program or school-based counseling. Those are the different components that we look at. But we do follow up before we close any case out, and those kids are kind of put on our on our radar just to to make sure that we know what's going on. Sometimes we know who the students are, and they're already on our radar. Sometimes, to be honest, they're not on our radar, and it's, it's, you know, something that, you know, without this system, we would have never known that they were having an issue. We do get some fake ones, like you're gonna have with anything, but I will say, by and large, our students and community have not abused this system, which, to be honest, we can't say for some for some other school districts in the area that when it first started had had quite the rash of of fake tips. So just to give you an example, as the the types of numbers we're looking at regarding our Safe to Say system, this is last year, a 58 total tips. And that's the breakdown as to kind of where they fell, 38 BASH, 18 Middle School West, and three Middle School East. And to tie it to our suicide prevention discussion of of that 58 number, almost, almost half of them dealt with depression, students who were talking about hurting themselves. And most of them are as simple as, hey, my friend was talking about hurting themselves, or they sent me a text, you know, at 10 o'clock on a Saturday night, and they were saying that they're really depressed, and they go in and they put a tip in, and we're able to check up on them and verify that they're okay. So to be honest, it's comforting to know that that help is there. I will tell you, our numbers for the start of this school year have have been, you know, higher than normal as well. The month of September alone, we're looking at about 13 so far. So the numbers are high. They are not all depression-related. So what are some of the prevention pieces that we do in our schools? Again, primarily in the secondary level is where the focus is. In our middle school, all of our students have Road to Success class in grades six through eight. During the first cycle of the school year, all of the students are trained on how to submit something to Safe to Say Something. They also receive during the month of September, which is Suicide Prevention Month, some general prevention strategies for, you know, if you see a friend who is depressed, how can you get help for them? Just basically awareness features that help, you know, them help their friends, and it's more awareness than anything. And then we also go a little bit more in-depth during seventh grade in the health classes. In high school, and this is kind of in a transition right now, they do receive some training in their health and PE classes, which I'll go in a little bit more detail on the next slide. And then staff also receives training, which is mandated actually by the Commonwealth. And every four years, every five years, I'm sorry, they receive several hours of suicide awareness and prevention training. And again, the, these are specifically set up for your secondary-level teachers. So one of the key things that is done at the the high school level that that has been done in the past, but it's kind of taking a new kind of twist to it, is a program called Signs of Suicide. It's a program that it's it's national, it's out there, and it is, students are encouraged to act, ACT, the acronym, acknowledge, care, and tell, when they're worried about themselves or friends. And again, this correlates nicely to the Safe to Say Something program. Currently, it is done in grades nine and 10 in the health and PE classes and facilitated by the school counselors who push into those classes. And, you know, we're constantly looking at other ways to incorporate these types of things into our program. I now am going to turn it over to Dr. Horton, who's going to go in a little bit more detail to talk about SEL and some other components that align with some of the other things that we're doing in Boyertown.
Hello, good evening. So Mr. Smaldins was talking about a lot of the things that we're doing specifically related to suicide and focus on that. But there's a lot of things that we're doing in suicide prevention that relate to the social-emotional learning that we're doing in the district. Research tells us that investing in social-emotional learning with our students is a protective factor for suicide prevention. And so the district has been working on social-emotional learning for the last three years. We have a three-year implementation plan. And social-emotional learning, if you think about that, that's really looking at the whole student and how do we support their growth? That's looking at emotions, what emotions am I feeling, and helping students to identify them, and also helping students to manage the emotions that they're having. Building upon that, that social-emotional piece is looking at relationship building, relationship skills, conflict resolution, and also decision-making skills. So all of those come into play. And when we're working with that, that's really the base at our elementary level when we're talking about prevention and for mental health and suicide prevention, to build that base for our kids. And we're also focusing that with our Road to Success program in the middle schools, as Mr. Smaldins had noticed, and in the high school. So that social-emotional learning has been district-wide, that we have been working with staff and students to build those factors. And as we build those factors, we know that they mitigate the risk of mental health, suicide, and depression. And how that ties into the PACE Youth Survey. So the PACE Youth Survey is a survey that's given across the Commonwealth. It's given to students on a number of years in grades six, eight, 10, and 12. And so this survey explores attitudes, knowledge, behaviors, and experiences of our students. So this is our students giving us a snapshot of their lived experience. So the survey encompasses more than alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, and that's the ATOD that you see up there. There's a social-emotional health component where we're gaining information about how students are feeling about themselves and what they're experiencing with their emotions and related to that social-emotional piece. We're also hearing about how they're feeling about their community and school climate, how they're feeling about the relationships they have with teachers in the building, how they feel about the classes they're taking, and whether or not they have opportunities to participate in activities and clubs within the school. And that's really important because we know that engagement and community in clubs and schools is another protective factor for suicide prevention and mental health. The antisocial behaviors there, that's looking at aggression behavior and like things like lying, but that's kind of what that is in gambling, is what that looks like. Now, it's important to know that this survey is anonymous, and it's voluntary, and it's confidential. So this survey doesn't collect student names, student ID numbers, or anything along those lines. It's just giving us an overall snapshot about the experiences in our student, for that our students are having. And so that information that we get from the PACE helps us to guide programming in the district. And so when we look at the PACE, we're looking at that in connection to other district information that we have from our student assistance program, how many students have been referred for assistance for other reasons in the district, whether it be mental health, whether it be for vaping or other drug use. And so we use this as a piece of the whole. So it's not the only thing that we're looking at when we're looking at program, but we're looking for patterns and connections. And so this is a piece that we use with that student assistance data, with attendance data, and other information that we have to help us make educated decisions about the things that we're offering and supports that we're putting in place for students. And so when we look at that information and we combine it, we are able to put supports and services in place that we might not otherwise be able to. An example of that was the grant that we received for $459,000 to support student mental health. With that grant money, we were able to bring school-based counselors into the district to support our students who we knew were struggling with mental health. And we have that in place for two years, and we have a number of students who are participating and getting additional support that they might another, otherwise not have had had we not identified and really used the information available to us to find out where there were supports needed for students. We also have used this with our social-emotional programming, if you think of that in connection to social-emotional learning, to put supports in place at the elementary level. So with our last PACE data, we had seen that students, when they were moving into sixth grade, that we saw increases in vaping. And that was with the PACE data, and that was also information that we had from student assistance teams and referrals that students had through high school and middle school that were identified. And so we were able to put programming in place, the Too Good for Drugs program in fifth grade, because we wanted to provide intervention before we were seeing students using vaping and other drugs. So we were able to say, you know what, we're noticing this trend here, let's put interventions in place. And so all the title of this program is Too Good for Drugs. It's important to note that it's a social-emotional learning program as well, and although it alludes to only focusing on drugs, that's really misleading. Goals of that program are enhancing protective factors for students, and that looks at emotional skills- protective factors for students, and that looks at emotional skills, that looks at healthy choices, positive friendships, and effective communication, and resisting peer pressure. So if you come across someone or friends of some who is trying to pressure you to make choices that aren't healthy for you, teaching the skills to talk to that person and explain that that's not something that you want to engage in, and giving students the tools and the communication and the words to make those healthy choices for themselves. And here, oh, if I had just moved, you would have seen some of the programs that we've put in place from that data. Here's some more of that information on the Too Good for Drugs that we put in place in fifth grade. Again, a prevention program that is looking at mitigating risk and enhancing protective factors. And those lessons are done in the classrooms, in our fifth-grade classrooms, and they're available to all students. And in third grade, we started using the PaaS curriculum through our SAP program as well, which is another social-emotional learning curriculum that is really focused more on that self-awareness and self-management, so identifying feelings and learning how to deal with uncomfortable feelings in positive ways, and also teaching that positive interpersonal skills with others. Both of these programs are facilitated through our Student Assistant Program in the elementary schools. In addition to these programs, and this would be across the entire district, K-12 in our Student Assistance Program, we also run skills-based groups. And that's with our SAP liaisons, both at the secondary and elementary level, where we offer groups that are skill-based, where they're learning, there's some of our students who have anxiety, we're working on coping methamphetamine. When I'm feeling my body get uncomfortable, and I'm feeling nervous about something, what are some things I can do to help bring myself down so that I'm in a calmer place? And so those are just an example of some of the programs that we offer for students using that data. Resources that we make available to our students at the high school, information on these are going across the banner in the lunchroom and other places throughout the school, so they're easily accessible to students. They're also on the counseling webpages and have posters up within the building. And they're reviewed in our Safe to Say and Suicide Prevention Lessons in the Road to Success Program with students. So the counselors review this with them. And many of our counselors also have this information or other resources for Montgomery County mobile crisis and Burke's Crisis on their email signatures should students or families reach out to the counselors. They get that response of that information if they're out of office.
Thank you both very much. Is there any questions from the board?
So thank you both very much for your presentations. They are very helpful and interesting. So what kind of feedback do we, or how do you measure feedback that you're getting from this to know that it's being successful over the couple of years that we've been using Safe to Say and the PAYS survey?
Sure. So I think, and I should have mentioned, I should have mentioned, for the PAYS this year, there's an online version of the PAYS. And what's nice about that is that will give you highlights from your data in December. Usually, we don't get them that information until April, so we can look at it quick over the summer and try to make changes. But sometimes we can't change or contract to make changes soon enough. So getting the snapshot in December would really help to guide practice. And so I think when you put prevention in place, especially if we're building at the elementary level, that it takes a while to see the results of the programming that we get in place. So the Too Good for Drugs, we did one year, and then COVID happened, and so that turned into a virtual lesson instead of an in-person. And it was much more effective in person, so we're excited this year to do it in person again. So right now, since we've only had one year of it, it would be too soon to say, really, what the effects was. But we got very good feedback from the teachers and students on the program, that it was very good information, and the students were highly engaged in the program and activities. So that lets us know that we're hitting a mark for them as to how that impacts. And so if you think of prevention, so if we start with the skills at the elementary level, at the building blocks, and then we add more to that at the middle school, we don't really see how that impacts until we get to the high school. So we have some time to get there. But we can see from 2013 to 15 to 17, the years that we've been doing it, where we've seen changes to add programming. And I think for sure, with the Safe to Say and the mental health things, that we can say that those prevention pieces have been effective in providing students a number of services over time. And I think Mr. Hemingway had a really good analogy with planting trees. When we plant trees, we don't always see how beautiful they grow in the end. And so a lot of our work is really building with skills and students, and sometimes change takes time.
I'll follow up on Safe to Say real briefly. We've actually had tips submitted by parents and also by teachers, as well as students. So it is, initially, when we first started with it, it was a matter of just educating and letting people know that it exists. But we do, I know in our West Week in Review that goes out every week, the Safe to Say Something logo is on there to remind you. They send us stickers, and there's signs and things like that that we have throughout the building. And they're even our refreshes throughout the year in Road to Success, just as a reminder that it is out there. So I think there is definitely an awareness by the students at this point, and also by parents, because anytime we meet or have, you know, a back-to-school night or something, we always make sure we remind about that, usually in our closing slide area.
Thank you.
Mr. Orchard, could I just check our online?
Does anyone on the phone have any questions or comments?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank you both again. To be honest with you, I was always a little skeptical of the survey. You know, I always worry about intrusive surveys coming into my home. But through hearing the presentation and conversations earlier, it is a valuable tool. And it does fall in line with keeping our kids safe, keeping them alert. You know, suicide's no joke. It's not anything that we want to take lightly. And I do appreciate you guys' effort in putting the presentation on for us tonight. So thank you both very much. Okay, next we have a, this is reported the president, but I'm gonna lay this server to, I believe, Mary Beth, or Pat, yes. Yeah, we're vote for PSBA officers. Mr. Nicole will have a listing for us to go through.
The board has an obligation to vote on the Pennsylvania School Boards Association leadership, and each board member has previously received the link to the slate of candidates. The board's PSBA liaison, Mrs. Denon, unfortunately could not be with us this evening due to a death in the family. She did, however, ask that we share her recommendations for the slate of officers for PSBA. Her recommendation for president is Mr. David Shap, as he is the more experienced board director. For the forum steering committee, the district will choose three, and she is recommending the women who are in closest geographical area to our district, Ms. Jen Davidson, Ms. Dina Lynn Sensis, and Ms. Jamie Lynn Zimmerofsky. All other positions have no opposition, and she recommends that the board cast a vote for them. The first leadership position that the board is asked to vote on is the president-elect. It's a one-year term. I will ask that you select one of the individuals, Sabrina Becker or David Shap, or abstain. I will begin with Ms. Dieroff. For president-elect, would you choose Sabrina Becker or David Shap, or would you wish to abstain?
Would you choose Sabrina Becker or David Shap, or would you wish to abstain?
I'll take Sabrina.
Thank you.
Did you get that?
Yes.
Mr. Foose, Sabrina Becker, David Shap, or abstain?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan, Sabrina Becker, David Shap, or abstain?
Mr. Shap.
Mrs. McWherter, Sabrina Becker, David Shap, or abstain?
Mr. Shap.
Ms. Nyman, Sabrina Becker, David Shap, or abstain? Mr. Updegrove, Sabrina Becker, David Shap, or abstain?
Ms. Becker.
Mr. Brophy, Sabrina Becker, David Shap, or abstain?
Abstain.
Mr. Hemingway, Sabrina Becker, David Shap, or abstain?
I too will have to abstain.
Motion fails to pass due to lack of majority. The next leadership position to be voted on is the vice president. Again, this is a one-year term. There is one person nominated, that is Allison Mathis. You can select her or abstain. We can also do a motion to select Allison Mathis as vice president, as presented, a motion and a second, and then do a roll-call vote.
Okay, with that suggestion, Mr. Updegrove will make a motion?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. McWherter.
I will now take a roll-call vote. There's been a motion to select Allison Mathis as vice president, motion by Mr. Updegrove, seconded by Mrs. McWherter. Ms. Dieroff?
Motion to select Allison Mathis as vice president, motion by Mr. Updegrove, seconded by Mrs. McWherter. Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. McWherter?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Mrs. Hogan, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
No.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
There is one leadership position, one nomination for the leadership position of the East Zone Representative. The motion is to select Edward Brown as East Zone Representative, as presented. I would need a motion and a second, and we could do a roll-call vote.
Okay, Mr. Updegrove and Ms. McWherter?
With a motion by Mr. Updegrove and a second by Mrs. McWherter, Ms. Dieroff?
With a motion by Mr. Updegrove and a second by Mrs. McWherter, Ms. Dieroff?
No.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. McWherter?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman? Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
No.
No.
Mr. Hemingway?
I'll abstain.
With four yes, three no, one abstain, motion has no majority and fails.
No, a four to three, since no expenditure or funds are involved, that motion would pass.
It would pass even with an abstention?
Yes. And I don't know about the first motion, I didn't keep track, that you indicated. What was the vote on that?
It was, the first motion for president-elect was three for Ms. Becker, three for Mr. Shap, and two abstain.
Okay, that would not pass.
There's an optional vote for the PSBA Insurance Trust trustee. We can select up to three or abstain. The three nominees are Mr. Richard Frakes, Mr. William LaCoffe, and Mr. Nathan Mainz. So each board member will be asked to select up to three of their choice for the PSBA Insurance Trust trustee or to abstain. Ms. Dieroff?
I will be abstaining.
Mr. Foose?
I'd select the three on the slate.
Mrs. Hogan?
I'll select the three on the slate.
Mrs. McWherter?
The three on the slate.
Ms. Nyman?
The three on the slate. Mrs. McWherter, the three on the slate. Ms. Nyman?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Updegrove?
Three on the state.
Mr. Brophy?
Abstain.
Mr. Hemingway?
Abstain.
Mr. Saltanic, with four voting and four abstaining, what would the motion, pass or fail?
I would say fails.
So the last motion fails. That's the last leadership position for the PSBA. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, there's one more. The PSBA Board Secretaries Forum Steering Committee, it's a two-year term, ends December 31, 2023. You would select three or abstain. The nominees are Jennifer Davidson from the Mannheim Township School District, Deanna Lancensey from Palisades School District, Beth Ann Ziegler from Schickel Emi School District, and Jamie Lynn Zimmerofsky from the Schuylkill Intermediate Unit 29. We will ask that each board member to select up to three of their choice for the PSBA Board Secretaries Forum Steering Committee or to abstain. Ms. Dieroff?
I'll take one, two, and four.
Mr. Foose?
I'll also do one, two, four.
Mrs. Hogan?
One, excuse me, one, two, and four.
Mrs. McWherter?
One, two, and four.
Ms. Nyman?
I'll get abstain.
Mr. Updegrove?
Just Jennifer Davidson.
Mr. Brophy? Mr. Hemingway?
I abstain.
Mr. Saltanic, Ms. Davidson received four yeses, Ms. Lancensey received four, Jamie Lynn Zimmerofsky received four, Beth Ann Ziegler received zero, and three abstentions. Could we cast the vote for the three, Davidson, Lancensey, and Zimmerofsky?
That's correct.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, there was four votes for Lancensey.
Yep. And that concludes the PSBA nominations and voting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. That brings us to finance report. I see there's none at this time. Secretaries' report?
No report this evening.
Mr. Saltanic, any report? I do have a report. We are very mindful of the community's interest in the issue of masking, as well as the board's interest in the issue. In one of the first cases in Pennsylvania to address the mask debate, the Federal District Court for the Eastern District of Pennsylvania, late last night, issued a decision in response to an emergency order requested by a group of parents in the Tridifern Easttown School District. In the case of Gehrlingh, G-E-E-R-L-I-N-G-H, versus Tridifern Easttown School District, the court was faced with a request by the group of parents seeking to prohibit the school district from enforcing the Secretary of Health's order prohibiting a school district. And they were requesting emergency relief. and they were requesting emergency relief from the court to prevent the school district from enforcing the Secretary of Health's order. The parents raised three arguments before the court. First, they argued that the Order of Secretary Beam violated their religious beliefs. Second, they argued that the masks were an unapproved medical device, and as a result, could not be required. And third, the parents questioned the authority of the Department of Health to issue such an order. The court rejected all of the parents' arguments at this point, and said that emergency relief would not be appropriate, and that the temporary restraining order should not issue. And they also went on to say that, based upon their review of the arguments, they did not think that the parents' arguments would ultimately succeed when they reviewed all of the matters beyond the emergency relief. The court went at great length to address the issue of a religious exemption, and the court said that it was not issuing a blanket rule that religious exemptions do not work, but they went through the facts of each one of the claims, and the court ruled that, and I won't go through the subtle nuances of the decision, that there must be a bona fide religious reason to object to the mask-wearing in question. But the arguments that were made when an emergency relief did not pass muster. Second, the court rejected that the mask order violated the Food, Drug, and Cosmetic Act on the basis that the masks are an unapproved medical device. The court found that because the district is not involved in manufacturing, marketing, or selling masks, the provisions of the Food, Drug, and Cosmetic Act do not apply to the district. And third, the court noted that the challenge to Secretary Beam's Department of Health order is based upon state law, and that the federal court lacked authority in that context to rule on the issue. And they noted that there is ongoing litigation in state court, which is true, over this issue. There is, the Commonwealth Court has a pending legal action that is probably three to four weeks away from a decision of the Commonwealth Court on the legal authority issue. And so, for the foregoing reasons, they denied the emergency relief order, and ruled that the remaining issues would be eventually addressed by the Eastern District. And as I said before, the Commonwealth Court is slated to rule on this probably in the next three to four weeks, and we will await that decision on it. To complicate things, the Governor's Office and the Secretary of Health indicated that as of October 1, they will be revisiting the Secretary of Health's order, which is at the end of this week. So we should be looking to see what the state will be further doing on this issue. The state legislature is in the process of engaging in what the state legislature does best, legislative wrangling in terms of what it will do with respect to masking, and of course, the courts are out there on this issue. And that leaves school districts, members of the community, up in the air while all of these issues are simultaneously going on. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Sultanic. Leads us next to our Superintendent's Report. Ms. Torsia?
All right, the Superintendent's Report, or the Consent Agenda. Tonight, I will be looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the settlement agreement for student number 241073, approval of creation of a student activity account for the class of 2025 Treasury Account, and the first reading of Policies 218.1, 218.2, 236.1, 247, 249, 252, 805, and 805.2. So the recommendation is that the Board of School Directors approve the consent agenda as presented.
Hogan moves.
Ms. Hogan?
I said Hogan moves.
Okay, sorry, Ms. Hogan moves, and a second, and a second by Ms. Deroff. We'll go right to a vote.
Ms. Deroff? Ms. Deroff?
Ms. Deroff? Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next, under the approval of the Superintendent's Report itemized agenda, tonight, we have on a approval of second addendum to Transportation Services Agreement. We are looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the second addendum to the Transportation Services Agreement as presented, pending final review by district solicitor. We did receive that final review today, and we have a solid agreement.
I'll start us off with that motion.
McWhorter seconds.
Second by Ms. McWhorter. Since it's itemized, any questions or comments? Mr. Foose?
I just wanted to share with the board, I sent some questions and comments to administration and board leadership, and had them answered and addressed. My concern with this action was centered around providing too many services with an outfit that we are outsourcing quite a bit of work to already making that more difficult, more challenging for us to bring those back in house at any point in the future, and also undercutting any type of leverage the district has over the ability to function autonomously with these types of services, like dictating our busing routes and things of that nature. But my questions were answered, and given all of the challenges that we're aware of, that have been shared with the community, and with parents about what we've been facing with bus driver shortages and various other transportation issues, I think at this time, this makes sense and is a good course of action.
Thank you, Mr. Foose. Anybody on the telephone? Okay, we'll go to all vote.
Ms. Deroff? Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman, or Ms. Nyman, sorry.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy? Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, we have the Personnel, and the recommended action is that the Board of School Directors approve the Personnel Agenda as presented.
Okay, I need a motion?
McWhorter moves.
Okay, Ms. McWhorter, and then Ms. Deroff, any questions or comments?
Wait, Ms. Deroff, we picked you up as the second, so we have it on the record.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Any questions or comments with regards to Personnel on the conference call?
None for me.
Changes made that I suggested?
For the dates?
Yes, I believe they were.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll call vote.
Ms. Deroff?
Ms. Deroff? Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That completes my report, Mr. President.
Okay, next up leads us to public comment period number two. I did read our statement in the beginning, for sake of time. I would hope that I don't need to read that again, but I will not hesitate to stop and go through that statement again if need be. I have a list already, and it looks like Officer Perez has some more for us. Give me one second, guys. Okay, it looks like these two.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, first up, we're gonna have Mr. Windsor, then, pardon me, Dejmar, and then Roy Olin. And again, please state your name, your address, and, you know, what you're gonna talk about. So go ahead, thank you.
Yeah, my name is David Windsor, I'm from Gilbertsville, and I'm here to talk about the continued abuse of our children. You said you were gathering data for 13 days. It's been over a month, and I have seen no data released to support your actions. I have gathered my own data, and from August 29th to September 5th, cases per 100,000 persons in mask optional schools of Pen Ridge, Council Rock, Central Bucks are down 6%, while all other masked up schools in Bucks County are up 50%. Locally, according to the Monco Department of Health Dashboard, New Hanover, Douglas, and Upper Frederick Townships as a whole have an average positivity rate of 140 per that same 100,000. However, for some reason, Basdee's Dashboard is reporting a positivity rate of 266 per 100,000. In raw numbers, Boyertown has reported 79 cases. Meanwhile, Daniel Boone, our next-door district, has reported only 26. How does Boyertown have more than double the cases of these schools? You expect us to believe the entirety of Monco, that includes several densely populated areas, has less cases than our rural community? Tell me what is required to prove a COVID infection. Are you asking for test results? Because I know you require them to return to school. How would you know if someone was falsely reporting? This administration is either lying to our faces, or so grossly incompetent they can't track this properly. Either way, this sham needs to end, and your policies are not working to prevent anything other than the proper education and well-being of our students. Behind these unbelievable numbers, we have real, living, breathing children being harmed, and stories their parents hear from their kids are things of nightmares. These come directly from parents that I asked, these are not made up. We hear our children tell us, even though they make friends, they don't know their names, because they can't understand what each other are saying. They have no idea who is talking, because they can't see anyone's mouth moving or facial expressions to let them know who is happy, sad, or angry. They are forced to eat in silence until all food is gone and masks are back on. They complain of daily headaches, dizziness, anxiety, and fear from improper mask-wearing punishments. They are forced to keep their masks on after sneezing into them without any way to clean them. They have rashes all over their faces. A child threw up in their mask and was afraid to take it off out of fear of retribution. Strep throat has been reported by many parents.
Thirty seconds.
From these disgusting, bacteria-filled muzzles. Never have our kids been so harmed for so little justification. The policy of forced masking is an utter failure. It's time to go with the majority of parents, students, and board members, who voted five to four, to believe in choice. Who will stand up for our kids and end this now?
Okay, Dejmar Alshin? I don't know, I haven't seen her. Is she, is Dejmar here? Okay, well, until she gets situated, let's go to Roy Olin. Mr. Olin here. Thanks, sir.
Board of School Directors, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Roy Olin, I would like to address Policy Number 202. I understand the concern that irresponsible, dishonest parents in the past have caused with coming to the district or claiming to be coming to the district and not actually coming. However, they still enroll their children to the Board Town School District while not living in the district themselves. The 30 policy works in some cases, however, not in all, and I believe it should be amended to allow benefit to the children and not to punish them because of those irresponsible parents. Take my family's case, for example. We currently live in the district, we are building a new house, and selling our current house, all within a 30-day time period. However, our builder just told us that we would have to push our date back by two more months. This is going to push us out of the district for two months. After everything was in motion, it was already too late. So we have been told, when we came to the Superintendent, that we have 30 days to either close or pay tuition. However, no one seems to know anything about the tuition. If you look at past years, we would be paying a year's worth of school taxes per month to keep our kids in the school district. This isn't doable for people trying to buy or build a home, along with all the other costs they are paying. The only other choice is for me to pull my daughter out of high school, just to put her back in two months later, and now I'd be two months behind, while my younger kids will be in three different schools in four months. This is horrible not only for their education, but for their mental, emotional, and social health. I think Policy 202 should be amended to allow a family to provide letters every month from the loan officer to approve, to state that they are financially approved, and from the builder to state that they are under contract. This will solve the issue that the school has with people not actually living in the district or saying that they are gonna come to the district, but they're not. And it will also solve my children's issue by allowing them to attend the school still. The family obviously would still be fully responsible for all transportation. I also believe that my children qualify under Policy Number 251, which I told they do not. It is the homeless students, by policy definition, are individuals lacking a fixed, regular, inadequate nighttime residence. Since they share a house with others due to unforeseen circumstances and do not have a home themselves, I request that they be accepted based on this policy. I hope together that we can help not only my children, but also others that are in this circumstance, and that deserve a fair chance at a good, stable education. Thank you for your time.
Dejmar, you're up. Thank you.
And you're here, okay? Okay, what exactly is the purpose of this board? I'll tell you. Your purpose has become to mask the children no matter what. Why are you looking out for students? Why aren't you making sure that students get the best education for the tax dollars spent? Isn't your responsibility to work with the community to improve student achievement in the schools? Education should be the aligned item on the school board agenda. It shouldn't be, it should be the only item. We elected you to be responsible for our children's education, not to be a health board. Do you know what my second grader is learning in school? The class has to look at a poster of a dog wearing a mask in different positions, and the kids have to answer which is the right way to wear it. At school, students are constantly told, "Put your mask up." It doesn't matter if the kids are unable to communicate because the mask gets in their way, or if they feel... way, or if they feel suffocated and need some fresh air for a minute. Just pull your mask, pull your mask up. That's over here. My seventh girl gets one mask break a day. If it's raining, she gets none. And all this based on what? CDC is one study on two hairdressers in Missouri and one of the 124 households in Beijing. These are the main studies the CDC uses to mask our kids. It is ridiculous. Just as ridiculous as someone sitting six years on this board saying that over 530 household signatures to unmask our children is a very small group to listen to, a one Facebook post is more than enough for her to be ashamed of this entire community because it is too racist to raise our children and grandchildren. This board has lost its purpose to provide quality education to serve this community. From a member asking to kick residents out of a meeting for copying to sherry picking, what better fits your purpose to mask the kids and everyone? This board is more afraid of the solicitor than you are of us, the people who put you in those seats. The solicitor, who is advising you calmly, is taking the easy path, telling you to just follow all orders that are not even legal, instead of representing the community who writes this check. Of course, it is easy to follow what the government tells you to do. That means he has an easy job. He sits there checking his phone while collecting an hourly rate for doing nothing. Newsflash, the threats you're getting from the Department of Education and the Department of Health are scare tactics. You can fight back. You choose not to do it. Let me remind you that your oath is to obey the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth. You are in violation of the rights of the students and our parental rights. Do your job on the CDC. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Amy, then Ms. Elks, and then Chris Hart. Johnson here. Nicole, then you're up. Ms. Elks, I knew you as Nicole.
Good evening. First, I would just start off by mentioning that one of the board members had mentioned last night that there hasn't been a lot of appreciation for what the administration and the board has done recently. While I very rarely agree with this particular board member, she is right. So I want to stand here and thank you. I know you've been taking a lot of heat, and I know it hasn't been easy, but there are people in this community who appreciate you and thank you for looking out for the best interest of the community. Now, recently, I want to talk about an article that was in the Pottstown Mercury. It was from one of our, it was about one of our neighboring school districts. It talked, it was called "Taking Its Toll: Families of Color Bear the Burden of Alleged Racism in a District." Basically, what the article is, it's stories from families and students that speak out about racial harassment they have faced and experienced in this particular, again, our neighboring school district. I want to remind everybody, Boyertown doesn't live in a bubble. It happens here, too. Just because people don't speak out about it doesn't mean that it's not here and that people aren't dealing with it. I personally witnessed racism in this area. I've spoken to people who have experienced racism and bigotry in this area. And I also want to mention that on September 13th, in this area, written on a bench close to our schools, was "No," followed by the N-word, "Get Out." This was just a couple weeks ago. It happens in this area. I'm gonna go back to Facebook posts by a particular candidate, and what she said in regard to that, that she didn't know what she said was wrong. We have failed as parents, as educators, and a community. If somebody can sit here and honestly say that they didn't know that posts that were racist were wrong, and that's what we need to look at. We need to take a look at what we're teaching our children, the way we're treating each other.
Thirty seconds.
So, again, I'm gonna ask the board, as a whole, to condemn all racism. Silence is endorsement. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next, Chris. Is it Chris Hart?
Kristy Hart. She's not here.
Okay. Is Ms. Bartino here? Oh, okay.
Okay, my go? Okay. For 18 months, we have constantly talked about data and numbers and the latest information. However, my concern is that the board is not keeping up on this and putting itself in the school district at more risk in the future. We're told we're in new times, new situations, unprecedented times, but are we? Scenarios existed prior to COVID regarding outbreaks. There are no examples of lawsuits at a school, against a school due to a virus. Businesses and schools are not losing their license. Schools are not losing their certification. These are all items which I'm quite sure have been made as threats to the school board, threats by the State Department of Education, threats of being sued, threats of losing licenses or insurance. Quite frankly, this is clear and present bullying. It's sad to see the board give in to this. You are buying into fear, and fear blocks logic. The good news is, all of you on the board do not need to succumb to these threats. You need to do more work and research to defend this school district better. There is actually a leg to stand on from a legal perspective against the mandates. The decisions you're making now and actions you're taking now are actually putting yourself at risk for future lawsuits. You're making policy outside the state mandate, and there is overreach taking place. There are plenty of lawyers reviewing this now, and plenty of parents who are getting educated on this right now. I am not saying this is a threat. I am saying this to help educate and make the board aware that actions now have repercussions later. Please get educated. Start consulting with other school districts that are not just toeing the line. Start consulting with other lawyers, others than those paid by the district. These lawyers are actually trying to help you, not fight against you. They see future lawsuits, and they can help you avoid them. Many neighboring school districts have instituted choice. Choice is a voice for all, as one superintendent stated. Lastly, you stated over the summer that masks impeded learning. How has this changed? How is that still not a priority? Have you realized the compounded effects on these kids? And as much as we don't like to compare, the reality is, students in Boyertown had their homecoming canceled, while other schools got creative and found a way to make it happen. Today, we have kids eating lunch, looking at walls, kids not participating in classes much. Ask your teachers, they'll tell you the difference, before masks and after. It's well-known that masks decrease the amount of oxygen in our system and lung tissue specifically.
Thirty seconds.
Which is quite ironic, because COVID seems to attack the lungs, and breathing oxygen levels is more important. The virus merges with lung tissue to infect you, and the virus works better with decreased oxygen. Peer-reviewed studies show the chances of developing an upper respiratory infection increases when wearing a mask by 13 times. So tell me again why you want to promote decreased oxygen? I think it's time to consult some other sources. Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, I believe, is it Jaden L. Eschelman? Again, when we get to the podiums, you can state your name, your address, and after that, we have Melissa Oh, thing, Eschelman.
All right, so I'm Jaden Eschelman. I go to Boyertown. My address is 397 Weinsteiners in Bechtlesville. So I'm not up here to just talk about numbers and statistics. I figure you guys probably heard enough about that. But I'm a student here at BASH. I've been here, I'm a student for four years now. I'm a senior. I've been here before COVID, during, and now after. With these masks and without the masks, the entire sense of the building is different. People go into the building wanting to learn, wanting to have fun. At least, that's how it seemed my freshman and beginning of sophomore year. People wanted to be there. People were excited to be around other people. Any activity you could do with a group, people were looking forward to get things going. There wasn't that feeling of being scared to be in school. There wasn't, there's that sense of uncomfort that these kids have now. Walking around the hallway, even looking at students, if you have a mask on, they become intimidated by seeing a senior that may be glaring at them. You try to talk to people, and they don't want to talk to you because you have a mask on, or they're just scared to talk. Trying to go around and just be a social person, as someone who I've tried to be and not change much during COVID, the people around me have all, you can see the drastic change in their demeanors. Now, this to me, I think, is more important than just, okay, we wear a mask in school. Our mental health of all of our students has been extremely affected, and this is something you can talk to students about, you can talk to counselors about, and you can talk to teachers about. Everybody has been either more scared to go into school, been just against going into school because they don't want to put a mask on, or has simply just chosen the option to do virtual because they find it easier that way. Now, I don't think that's how we should have our school be ran, as students having to choose between what's gonna be easier for them or might not cause conflict, as they're not gonna want to learn as well, and there's not gonna be as well of a social aspect of school. Another thing that was talked about was sports games. Sports games haven't become nearly as popular, and that just goes with the flow of our school, as our students aren't as intertwined. Everything feels very segregated and very, just far apart, and that's all due to the masking, due to the spacing, but that's just how people's demeanor has changed now because of us going into school. Nobody wants to be together. Nobody wants to go out after school. Nobody wants to plan anything. We lost our homecoming. We had a, our prom last year was a lot smaller than proms have been, and it was a lot different, but we somehow tried to make that work. We now lose homecoming, and we're losing more things for this year. What's next? More and more students are pulling themselves out of BASH than wanting to go back in. So this whole trying to get everybody on in-person learning seems to be backfiring more than it is helping. Now, me being a student here, I love seeing people there, and I love talking to people. I don't think that the mask is something that is needed for that, and I think it's something that actually does get in the way of that. Obviously, there's safety aspects of things here and there that can be talked about, but for the mental health of our students, and what I believe that is doing to students mentally, I think it's a lot more drastic and a lot more, forgive me, I don't know the word, but a lot, just, it's a lot worse for our students mentally than it is physically for potentially having to deal with catching a coronavirus. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Melissa. Melissa?
Good evening. I'm Melissa Eschelman of 397 Weinstein Road in Bechtlesville. Boyertown preaches so much about no place for hate, yet that has, that is all that's been going on these past 18 months. The adults on our school board, principals, and teachers are bullying the parents and children if they have different beliefs other than pro-mask, pro-vax. These adults are supposed to be role models for our children and let them know it's okay to have a different opinion. Many of these teachers are also in violation of HIPAA. The things that they are saying to our children, like, they should not be allowed to say it's not any of their business. They should not be asking kids their vaccination status. That's not something that they're supposed to do. All of you sitting up there are elected school board members, elected by the people of this district, and you're supposed to be up there representing us, the people, all of the people. There are plenty of us that are against masking our children and just want mask choice. If people, other parents, want to mask their kids, they can do that. You are elected, you were not elected to make medical decisions for our children, and to my knowledge, none of you sitting up on the board are medical doctors. I might be wrong, but from what I could find, none of you are doctors. Section 504 allows for mask exemptions per the mandate. It did not state anywhere that it required a doctor's note or medical records. It also states that face shields are allowed before an exemption is made, and they are not considered to be part of an exemption. But you're telling people that their children are not allowed to wear them. You're telling us that our exemptions are not allowed, and you won't recognize them without a doctor's note or medical records. Your head nurse is denying family doctor exemptions. Where do you get this type of authority? You're discriminating against our children and making them sick. Our children have been coming home with signs of hypercapnia, migraines, sore throats, strep throat, all due to dirty mask-wearing all day and breathing in their own carbon dioxide. You need a signed note from the parents to administer eye drops and Tylenol. So what makes you think that you can override our decisions and make our children wear something that imposes a threat to their health? Not only are you causing physical, medical ailments, but you're also causing a host of mental ailments, from anxiety to depression, and even suicide, which was talked about in great length tonight. Have you looked up the suicide rate and how that has grown over the past 18 months? That's a whole nother road to travel down. By denying your exemptions, you are opening yourself up to lawsuits and legal action. These are our children, not yours, to make decisions for. At no point did we ever grant you consent to make decisions and enforce these rules. At the home football game Friday night, no one wore masks, maybe a few, but they were not enforced or required. No one's wearing masks at restaurants, grocery stores, ballparks, concerts, steams, parks, not even Disney World. Yet here in Boyertown, where there's not a surge in cases, not a high outbreak, we are making our children wear masks. Why? Why are you instilling such fear into our children? If you want to mask your child, that's fine, have at it, but it is not okay to make that choice for others. I am my child's mother, not you, and I know what is best for him. Please honor the mask vote for mask choice and allow parents and families to make their own decision. Please save our children. Thank you.
Okay, thank you again. Everybody had comments. That leads us next to board comments. Let's see, how we're gonna, let's do everybody online on the conference call, and then I'm just gonna randomly pick.
Do you want to start with Mrs. Dieroff?
Thank you, Ms. Dieroff. I guess that would help.
Mrs. Dieroff, would you, do you have any board comment to make?
Good evening. Thank you.
Ms. Nyman, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do. I hear all of you people very loud, very clear. I've also had the privilege of listening to Doug Mastreone this afternoon, and he has seven at bill, I think it's 876, that passed through the committee today, and is going hopefully on the floor tomorrow. I urge all of you to call and have them opt out for students. I don't know what else to do for you anymore. My hands are tied. I hear you. I don't want the mask. So, if you remember, I'm the one who put out the option thing. I did not want to go with the law. So my encouragement to you is to contact your representatives, have them vote this, get this on the floor tomorrow, and have them vote for opting out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nyman. Mr. Brophy, do you have any comments?
No comments.
Ms. McWherter, or are you still gathering your thoughts? Okay, we'll go to Ms. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Hemingway. I appreciate it. Excuse me. So I just wanted to give another congratulations to all the seniors in the senior spotlight tonight, and I wanted just to highlight the lady bears who, our soccer team, who received the United Soccer, excuse me, Coaches High School Team Academic Award. It looks like it's a pretty prestigious award, so it's really awesome, and that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Yes, similarly, congratulations to the women's soccer team. That's a great achievement. So I know typically at our, at our first meeting of the month, we do our committee liaison reports, but I had some information for upcoming presentations that will be included in the next meeting, so I wanted to just address those right now. So this is for the Education, Technology, and Student Service Committee. October 12th, we're anticipating a presentation on the district's portrait of a graduate, which I know has been under development for quite some time, as well as the instructional model that will support that portrait of a graduate. We've, the board has been given an opportunity to preview some of that, and I think you can see the lot of thought and care and dedicated hours have gone into that to help drive the district in a meaningful way as far as our goals and our objectives. November 9th, we will be getting a presentation on the virtual instruction that's taking place at the different grade levels, and I believe we'll have some demonstrations so we can actually, the board can see what our students are, who have we can actually, the board can, can see what our students are, who have, who have opted into that program, how, how the education is being delivered to them, and that's obviously something that we're looking to grow, and a lot of work has gone into that in the past year as well, so looking forward to that presentation. And then on November 23rd, the board will be presented with the Course of Studies, and there will be a, a presentation that evening, and they're anticipating a, a vote on that as well. And all of these things go toward that Portrait of a Graduate and, and building the capacity that we're hoping to have in these students when they leave Boyertown. And I did highlight one aspect of that that I thought was important to share, the, the four Cs, communication, critical thinking, collaboration, and creativity. So, I look forward to hearing more about that from our presenters.
Thank you, Brendan.
Thank you, Mr. Hemingway. I'd like to welcome back Sarah, and welcome to Olivia. Thank you guys very much. I look forward to the student reports that you guys give, and so I'm, I'm happy to see you back here for the school year. Thanks to Evan and Mr. Kraszewski. Did I say that right? Tukowski, okay. I was close. And our IT people, as always, for setting us up. We couldn't do this without you guys. Mr. Sultanic, thank you for updating, updating us on the legal actions that are ongoing with regards to masks and what happened in the Eastern District. And those are it for my comments.
Mr. Updike Grove? Okay, that's going to lead us to any announcements. Oh, believe me, I do, but I, I would remain silent.
Our upcoming meetings will be October 12th, Committee of the Whole, October 26th will be our Board of School Directors, and then we have November 9th for the Committee of the Whole, and November 23rd. Within the Let's Talk Tuesday, there were a lot of updates for things that are going on, and our sports are in full swing, and lots of competitions are taking places on all of our fields across the district. So, you can pretty much watch a game, whether it's on a field or on the court, volleyball court. Our kids are, are, you know, excelling in their areas, so those things are going on. I know that we also had the Cal� cake of bands as well, so lots of, lots of good things happening within the district with the kids, for sure. That completes my announcements.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you, board. Thank you, guests. With that, I motion to adjourn. Ms. McWherther and Mr. Updike Grove, seconds. Thank you, everybody. Have a safe trip home.